Join us in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, so again, thank you everyone who came out and everyone who's watching on TV. We have a short agenda tonight based on one topic, and that is the traffic impact study that was submitted by Wawa for the two parcels on the southeast corner of South Aberdeen Avenue and Lancaster Avenue. My understanding is that there were first communications from Wawa back in April. I was brought into the loop in June, sent everything out to the residents, and we wanted to hold this meeting simply to have a dialogue about it and make sure everyone has as many specifics as possible right now about the plan. So with that being said, what we're going to do is I'm going to have the applicant present what they're planning and give us as many specifics as they can. Then I'll turn it over to township staff to allow them to weigh in on it, and then of course we'll have public participation, and you know, anyone is welcome to say whatever they want to about this project. So again, I appreciate everyone coming out to do so. So with that, Nick?
Sure. Nick Canelia, I represent the applicant on this and would like to thank Mike for arranging this meeting and making it live.
Wait, so what's the procedural step that we're on right now, Counselor?
Nothing's been filed.
Nothing's been filed, so we don't have an applicant?
No.
Not technically an applicant.
Not technically yet. So as I said, I'm Nick Canelia, I'm the attorney representing the applicant. I'll introduce the applicant, Gary Karakelion and his son.
Yeah, we're not applicants yet.
Well, we are out, well, we're going to be applicants. His son Pete, why don't you guys just stand up. They own several properties in Radnor, and the one property you may be aware of, Gary's first property, was the old Sunoco station at the corner of Conestoga Road and 320, and that was an old gas station, and Gary, since that was his first gas station, decided to buy it back several years ago against my advice, but he's turned it into a very lovely place you may know now as it's a care center, urgent care center for doctors. They own several other properties, including Boyle's Golf there on Iton Avenue, the current Wawa site in Wayne, and I probably missed a couple too, you know, but, so.
Oh, and then we have some of the gas stations.
Yeah, so, and also we have here Chaz Evans from Bowler Engineering. Bowler will be doing the engineering, the civil engineering for this site. We also have onboard traffic planning and design as far as, and they will be preparing a traffic impact study as well. They couldn't make it tonight, everyone there is on vacation, and so unfortunately we couldn't have them here tonight, although we would love to have had them try to make arrangements to get someone here from them, but we were unable to do so. But you'll see them at some time in the future. I think you're all familiar with the site, so we have Lancaster Avenue here, Aberdeen Avenue here. Currently we have the BP gas station and car wash, and so outline here is the actual car wash facility, and then, you know, I guess these are the gas pumps, the vacuums, okay, they're here, the vacuums. Then you have the regular retail building that they have located on that site, and BP has, well actually, the total number of dispensers currently on both stations are 11, and you'll see that we're proposing to have six after the site is developed, hopefully developed. On the Sunoco site, we have an existing gas station as well, and this is a full-service gas station because there's automobile repairs located in this location as well as the regular gas dispensers as well. And I think you're all aware, this is pretty much an entirely paved site, and it has a number of curb cuts. Currently, I believe there's five curb cuts, two on Aberdeen and...
Three on Lancaster? Is that...
There's six curb cuts.
There's six total?
Yes, total.
Two on...
Two on Aberdeen and four on Lancaster.
And four on Lancaster, okay. And you'll see when we go to the proposed plan that we will have less than that. Currently, there's no buffer, you know, in the rear here, we'll be proposing a buffer as you see as well, and you'll also see right now the rear yard setbacks are very close here and are non-conforming. We would be extending them considerably into conforming with the rear yard setback requirements and actually more than is required. Also, as you know, there is no landscaping on this site. We will be complying with shade tree and township ordinance regarding landscaping. We do have a plan that we can show you to some extent this evening, nothing's really final here. These are proposed plans that we're in the process of developing. And also, as you're probably aware, this site currently has no stormwater management at all. It's an older site, and like a lot of sites in Radnor, it has no stormwater management. We're proposing to provide stormwater management in total conformity with the township regulations. And as you're well aware also, there are existing canopies on both sites, on both the BP and the Sunoco site, which cover the dispensers. This is the proposed site you'll see here. Here's the proposed Wawa retail store, be located in this site.
Is it going to mess everybody up? Just reorient everyone?
Well, it's backwards for them. I think you want to put it...
You can't see the whole thing.
Yeah, I think, yeah, let's put it, maybe easier. Let's see. Yeah, you're right, yeah.
Can you move that table out some? There you go.
It's pretty easy.
Could it be going that way?
Sorry, guys. There you go. Nice. Alright, again, to orient everyone, here's Lancaster Avenue, here's Aberdeen, here's proposed Wawa retail store, be located here. You'll see there's an outline here of the existing, of the existing car wash, which comes down to here, and I believe these would be the vacuums here in this location, it's right there. And so the building would be located in this area. This would be a consolidation of two lots. The Karakelions and their entities own both lots, so what they would be doing is combining both lots. And then on this site, here's the canopy for the gas dispensers. And as I mentioned, we're going from 11 currently to six on this site. We're proposing one curb cut on Aberdeen as opposed to the current two on Aberdeen, and we're proposing two curb cuts on Lancaster as opposed to the current four. Also, you'll see there's a landscape plan that shows a 15-foot buffer between the site and the residential neighbors in the rear. We're reducing lot coverage by about 2,000 square feet, we're providing additional landscaping, and we're providing stormwater management. Actually, the current, and you'll see this building, I think it's outlined here, is this the current, yeah, is that the current repair shop? So the setback here is actually 86 feet as opposed to the current 18 feet, so we are moving it further away. We're removing the car wash, we're removing the automobile repairs, none of that would be located on this site. So that is basically a brief overview of the site. I'll ask, I don't know, well, let's show the landscape plan. And Chaz, why don't I let, I'll have you go through the landscape plan, you're a little more familiar with it than I am.
So briefly again, the landscape plan is kind of conceptual to see how we would meet or exceed the township's requirements. As Nick had mentioned, we do have a 15-foot buffer as required by the township on the rear property line, which is proposing evergreen trees as a couple deciduous as well, and the rear buffer actually exceeds the township's current requirement for the buffer yard. In addition, we are proposing street trees along Lancaster and Aberdeen.
And again, as Chaz said, it's very conceptual at this point, and that's why obviously we're glad that we're meeting with a couple of the commissioners, several of the commissioners as well as the affected neighbors here. I don't know if you want, Luke, do you want to go to staff or...
I just have a couple of questions, and then I'll let Rich and Lisa ask any questions they may have as well. Just for confirmation, this is a one-story structure, is that correct?
That is correct.
Alright, and then with regard to the buffer, is there going to be, was there going to be a wall or fencing, or what's there going to be there, and how tall is that going to be?
Right now, we don't have anything there, just small, just a little small brush, you know, a couple of trees.
Yeah, I think...
Currently.
Or can he speak from the mic?
Yeah, we need him, we need him to speak into the mic.
Yeah, right now, really, it's nothing but high-toll weeds all around the backyard. So this is going to be extensive, whatever, extensive landscaping buffer between the residential and the site. It's going to be a huge buffer over here probably, all landscaping, probably high trees, you know.
Sounds like you probably want a fence here, is that why you had mentioned...
Yeah, I mean, what I'm concerned about are, you know, I'm seeing a lot of parking spots going right into the Finley's and the McManus's yards there, so my concern would be, you know, the light pollution there, so that's why I would ask you to think about a...
There's mature trees right now, and thank you very much for...
You're absolutely right. I mean, one of the most intrusive things of the commercial onto the residential is the lighting, actually, and we don't really address that when we look at the development. CVS store, you know, good neighbors, but their lighting package shines into all the neighbors' backyards. And right now, there's a six-foot fence, you also haven't accommodated for the slope, it slopes down to the residential area. So the way you have diagrammed it when you first presented a six-foot fence, all the car lights would shine directly into people's homes as people pulled into the parking lot. There are mature trees back there, not well-kept at all, I mean, they're not well-kept at all, and you want to do a landscaping package, but it's a very steep slope right down there. So, you know, if you consider potentially a retaining wall to block the light out and provide you with a flatter grade to do your package.
Perhaps a berm also with the fence on it could be a possibility as well.
Right now, it's a bottom, most of them are going to put them in on over.
But that's, again, it's all conceptual right now, and so that's why we're glad to hear from you guys to...
Yeah, so I just want you to be aware, you know, that's my concern for them, so, you know, I'd like that to be taken into account. Obviously, the final decision here, I'd leave up to my neighbors there, but that's something we'd like to see. Additionally, you said you're going to do stormwater management, there's none there now, that's obviously, that would obviously be a benefit if this were to go through. I, you know, people have been asking me about 55 parking spots, you know, that's a lot of parking. I feel like that's a lot of possible cars there. I know that this will attract traffic and customers, which obviously you all want, you're in the money-making business, so, you know, that's something, and I'm sure that'll be commented on by the public, that's something that did take me back a little bit when I saw that number there. Additionally, and this is 24 hours, is that the plan?
I have a survey.
That's the plan, okay. And other things that I was thinking about were, we talked about the neighbors, intersection improvements, I get a lot of complaints about people crossing the street there, we do have a school, a church, and a middle school a block away there, so those are things that I definitely want to make sure are taken into account, as one of my neighbors confirmed, I didn't see much about that in the traffic study, so that's a concern. Obviously, we'd love to see as many trees as possible, and obviously, we'd like to see, you know, as high-level architectural plan and signage as possible if that's, you know, if this is going to go through, so.
We don't have a conceptual yet.
Yeah, there's no sketch or anything yet? Alright. Alright, Lisa?
Thank you very much for providing us information. So I guess my question, I just, in order to try to visualize this, and people have been calling this it's a super Wawa, I guess mainly because they consider it that, because it has the gas station, you know, when you see these Wawa, so I'm glad to hear there's only six, so there's only six bays, places for...
Six dispensers.
Six dispensers, so there's six pumps.
Well, there's...
There's 12.
With double sides.
12 pumps.
So 12, okay.
Yes, we're currently, there's 22.
22, okay. Because you see these, you know, Wawa's and they're huge, and you've got the giant canopy, is that, I'm just trying to create a visual for people so people understand, is that what you're visualizing here? I know there's not as many pumps as some of them have, but that huge canopy, is that...
We haven't gotten too far into the details of the canopy itself, but the Wawa footprint itself is a smaller Wawa footprint than other Wawa's you've seen, it's not the largest Wawa that's there.
Okay.
So it is a smaller footprint that we're working with compared to other Wawa's we've worked on.
Okay, and so you'll be kind of working that, I guess, accordingly, based on the space, okay.
This is not the super Wawa that...
Can you...
Mike, give him the mic, yeah.
Microphone, please, sir.
This is actually our request is one of the smallest pump Wawa, because right now we have 11 dispensers, which is 22 fueling system, and we're going to reduce that to six dispensers, which is 12, half of what we have. There's a huge, almost two and a half canopy on both sides, it's going to be only one canopy. So the whole downsizing pretty much, it's not one of those huge, you see them, super Wawa, it's going to be very, very small Wawa, really, as far as gasoline, as far as the canopy, and the only thing, the store, if you put two buildings together, you know, still will be the same or smaller.
Okay. Do you have a question?
I liked your question, he didn't answer it, you asked about height.
Height, actually, the engineering, I don't know what, I'll be honest with you, at this point, I don't know what the height of the canopy is going to be.
So...
And especially the Wawa now, they design in light, particularly take care of the neighbors, you know, not reflect the lights, I don't know what kind of lights are, I'll be honest with you, that world comes.
And Luke, we'd be happy, you know, once we come up with more detailed plans, maybe to come back here again, you know, possibly before we file even.
Yeah, I would, I mean, I'm sure everybody would be interested to see a sketch, you know, height, things like that, so.
Yeah, I think that would be good, and is there, you know, if there's a possibility of, you know, concessions or something like that, when it comes to things like that. One of the things I want to ask about too is the gas service, does that have to be 24 hours? I don't, are those two stations there, neither one of those are 24 hours right now, are they, for gas?
Yeah, no.
I believe gas is...
Gas is?
The PM, the Sunoco AM/PM, that's 24 hours, I believe.
The one on the other side?
Am I right? Across the street, yeah, yeah.
The one across the street is 24 hours.
The one across the street, yeah.
Okay. Is there a possibility, and you don't have to answer me now, but is there a possibility that maybe the gas wouldn't be 24 hours? You know, I realize that the Wawa...
Yeah, that's a Wawa.
The store would be.
Yeah, that's a Wawa issue.
Okay, alright, so I'll put, I'll just throw that out there. And other than that, the sidewalks and all that, do you plan on increasing, because I think, you know, Luke makes a good point, that is a, an intersection where there are a lot of people, you know, people are crossing, a lot of them mainly on the other side, I think, cross, you know, cross in front of the church and whatnot, but it is a pretty busy intersection for pedestrians, especially, you know, certain times, certain days of the week and certain times of day. So the sidewalks on that side, are they, they'll still be, you know, maintained, or will they be increased, or, and then going down Lancaster as well?
Okay. And I would, I do commonly get complaints about, and as was stated a little bit earlier, I get complaints about the maintenance there along the neighbors' backyards, so I would, if this is to go through, I would definitely want some serious, you know, I would want to make sure the maintenance is, you know, top-notch for them.
That's all I have for right now, I, you know, we'll let Rich, and I want to give the residents a chance.
First question, what happens with the existing Wawa at further west on Lancaster Avenue?
My understanding is staying.
Make sure, just make sure...
So the existing Wawa would stay, it would stay and continue to operate, and how far away is that Wawa from this one?
I think everyone knows where it is, Rich, I don't, yeah.
Three-quarters of a mile?
Rich, we don't know, everyone knows where it is, come on.
Nick, whoever's talking, just have one person talk, and I just need to use the mic.
I think we should, we need to know how close these Wawa's are.
Just estimating, estimate maybe half a mile, three-quarters of a mile, mile, you know, I do know, how far is the, I don't know, maybe a mile?
I don't know, I'm asking, I'm asking, I'm asking you.
I have a measure that that question have came, you know, because, but they do have a lease over there, I think another five or seven and a half years lease still exists with that Wawa in Banbury.
So Wawa, that, do they have a master lease with you for other Wawa's, or is this your first Wawa? How does, what's the relationship with Wawa? Because you, are you going to do a design build for Wawa, or do you just lease it to Wawa and they build it?
They go, we develop the land, we do the site work.
You do the site work?
We do the whole site work, and they will come, you know, build the site to put their building and the gas and the canopy.
Do you have an agreement with Wawa signed right now, or is that still being negotiated?
No, we do have it, you know, we do have lease.
Do you have other leases with Wawa anywhere else nearby?
Yes, I have one in Wisconsin, Cross Street from the Marriott, that one, and Banbury, the one in Wayne, you know, and this will be the third one.
So you have, the one at Banbury is also, that's your property as well?
Which one?
At Banbury, Lancaster Avenue and Banbury?
Yes, yes. Actually, that area was, I don't know, I've been here 50 years in Radnor Township, that place, Banbury used to be flooding zone, a rain like today would have been three feet of water.
Yes.
We saw that water.
We know quite a bit, we've discussed that quite a bit. How many, the Wawa at Banbury and Lancaster Avenue has undergone extensive renovation in the last year, how big is that one right now?
I think it's 4,500 square feet if I'm not mistaken, 48, could be five, I don't know. I can, if you want, I can get that number.
Yes, I would.
Yeah.
And this one...
That's a good call, Rich, I would like to see that.
This one, this one you have, it's 4,750 square feet?
It's about, I think, the same size, really.
What will happen with the existing Lessee's, the Sunoco dealer, and I don't know if BP has a dealer in there, or if that's a co-op?
We currently operate ourselves.
You operate, you operate the BP?
Yeah.
What about the dealer in, at the Sunoco, the dealer that's there?
The dealer Sunoco, I'll tell you back history, I started in Villanova gas station Conestoga, 1968, December 23, 1968, and Howard Reinhardt came with me, maybe about 1969, when he was 16-years-old. He's still with me running it at the Sunoco station.
Yes.
And he is now at 66-years-old, from 60, almost 50-years, he's been with us, and he's ready to retire, let's put it this way, you know, and we still, I have another two guys that with me, still there, one is Mark Bruton, and what we're going to do really, I'm going to give the Boyle's Golf to move them from there to there, so nobody's losing a job as far as our employees. And most of our customers, 90% of customers was Radnor Township customers, all the stations.
So you said that the dealer would basically relocate to a new location?
Well, no, Howard might retire, I'll be honest with you.
So Howard, and I know the Reinharts, and I know the, I know the family.
So you know Howard Reinhardt, he's been with me since he was 16, 17-years-old, the whole family, the wife, the kids.
But you said the people who work there would go to a different station?
Different, I'm going to try to put the, probably at Boyle's Golf.
And that's the one at Villanova?
That's right, Conestoga Road.
Conestoga Road?
Radnor Chester Road, right over there.
Is it at Sproul Road, 320, across from the bank, or is it at...
No, 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 this is, you know where Iton Food Market is, Iton Food Market.
It's right near where the Blue Route goes over 320 and Conestoga.
Yeah, okay, okay, yes, yes, yeah.
Radnor Chester and Spring Mill Road.
Yeah, right, okay.
Right there.
How many existing trips for the BP and the Sunoco, what's the traffic today?
Well, but...
Rich, as I said, you know, we'll provide that, I mean, that's part of the traffic impact study, we don't have that information tonight.
What's, what are the anticipated trips from the new, from the new Wawa? It's, there's a much bigger convenience operation, and we all know how popular Wawa is, and we have, how many, every morning, it's loaded up with contractors, and then it's loaded up at 10 and 11 with students and other people, and then in the evenings, and we're great fans of Wawa, I wish I could invest in some Wawa equity, but I don't, I've looked for, I've looked for, I've looked for Wawa debt to buy, I haven't even been able to get that, but is this, my guess is this is going to have a lot more trips in total convenience and gas than what we have for our two stations there.
Hold on, hold on, we'll have to know, like, as I said, Rich, we're going to have a traffic impact study, we're in a very early process, the township requested this meeting, we're happy to meet with the neighbors and with you, but we're very, we're very early on right now.
So you would agree there'll be more trips, though?
I don't know, that would be up to the traffic people, both Gilmore and, you know, I don't know, to be honest.
Okay, Counselor?
There's a good possibility they're with you.
He's very cagey, isn't he? How much, how much underground storage is anticipated? You have five tanks that are shown right there, what's the anticipated underground storage for gasoline, and will there be diesel as well?
Currently on the proposed plan, there are five 15,000-gallon tanks, and yes, there is proposed, all the dispensers are three-by-ones, doing the regular mid-grade premium fuel and diesel, which is the current Wawa standard.
75,000 gallons underground, that's...
I'm not sure what's existing now, I don't know.
Hold on, mic, please.
Right now, I think we have seven tank underground, and it's going to be four tanks, and we are probably right now close to 50,000 gallon total.
Yeah, so...
50, 50, I don't know.
So Sunoco, so I know about Sunoco, Sunoco will always have two tanks, one for high, one for 93 now, and then one for 87, and they blend...
Right, 12, we got 12 and 87 for Sunoco.
Right.
You're absolutely right, but the BP has regular, medium-grade, high test, and diesel.
Okay, so there's, it sounds like there's going to be a substantial increase in underground storage at the site, which again would indicate that we expect, we're going to sell more gasoline with this, that Wawa than we have with those two stations?
That's possible, I'm not, right now, we're doing a good volume. If you know Howard's station, I'm sure you know.
Yes.
You've been there, we do quite a bit of volume over there, we're doing 130, 140, sometimes 1,000 gallon, and BP doing that much, I'm just saying, you know, about the volume, I'm not holding back. We do some volume over there, and we do a lot of car wash volume too, that Wawa will not have a car wash volume, okay? There's cars coming into car wash, that, car wash, it's 75,000 cars a year, it did as much as high as 100,000 cars, when it's good days, because now the car wash is falling apart.
Yeah, it's, I mean, it's a small car wash, anyway, I mean, it's very small, and, you know.
So we do have plenty of volume right now over there. If it's going to increase between the car wash and gasoline and the repair, I really, I don't know.
The, across the street is another Sunoco, so we have a Sunoco and Sunoco across it...
Well, I used to have the both Sunoco's, right? Cross Street was mine, and that one was mine.
So the one across the street is a co-op store, so is that, is that a...
It's not mine now, it's, I sold it back to the company.
Oh, you sold, okay, right, so...
I sold it back to oil company.
So Sunoco has a company-operated store across the street from the dealer location, which you leased that to Howard?
Right.
So is there, has there been any communication with the Sunoco folks on this? Do they have any, do they have any thoughts on this?
They have, really, they don't have, another, they don't control us.
No, I know, I know.
They don't control us, we own the property, and then the dealer, as I said, Howard, just like my son, no, no.
That's, no, it is, it is still, it's branded Sunoco, but you're right, it's his own, you're right.
It's going to be...
Sunoco sold all of the, they sold, Sunoco sold all of the company-operated locations to 7-Eleven. They sold, Sunoco sold all of the company, company operated locations to Seven-Eleven last year.
Yes.
And it's about a three billion dollar deal.
That might be Seven-Eleven, Crook Street.
It might, it might be Seven-Eleven, so you, do you know any of the details on the branding of that one?
That's gonna be Sunoco. The, the branding is gonna say Sunoco.
That's across the street?
Yeah, because I think they bought the brand here from Sun Oil Company.
And I will-
Do you have a conflict, Rich? Do you have a conflict?
I, 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 just full disclosure, I do, I do have, I do have a few hundred shares of Sunoco LP. Sunoco LP, which is not, which is not Seven-Eleven.
Let's, let's, let's keep this on point here.
So I just wanna make that disclosure. You say this is not a super Wawa, but most Wawa's, like the one at Banbury, do not have, most Wawa's are convenience stores. So one of the things that Luke said was you're in the business of making money. Well, you're, you're in the business of leasing and Wawa's in the convenience store business. And they have, over recent years, branched out to gasoline. And, um, so that's kind of what the defining line is, as I understand it. A super Wawa is one with gas, gas pumps. Is that not the case?
Rich, that's your terminology, okay?
Okay, all right. So, yeah, I mean, that's, 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 hold on.
Right, 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 I, I understand, I understand. Uh, I, I think the concern that I have is, one, we have a concern for the neighbors that are back. And Luke points out, the, um, the gas, uh, station has a lot of parking and, and five, fifty-five spots for Wawa. And I don't know what we have, again, it would be very helpful, Attorney Canelia, if we could get exact data on the existing Wawa. How many spaces? What's the square footage? And, um, we, we need to know that. And also, uh, trips, they're there for, for relative comparison. And then with this one, but I don't think we have fifty-five spots at Banbury.
I doubt it. I doubt it, yeah. Gary, that's all right, we'll, we'll figure it out. We'll, we'll get back.
Yeah, my, my only point with that is, it's a lot of spots, so.
So this is a lot of spots, so that's number one. My concern is the traffic that this will generate. And as you know, I, I am a stickler for the traffic issues we have. And, and this is not in my ward, but my ward is just down, uh, to the west of this. And I'm the second ward, I think this is the third ward, this is yours, right?
Uh, yeah.
So, um, the biggest complaint that I get from the constituents, the, number one by a long shot is the traffic and the drivability of Radnor has been massively impacted over prior years. And we see a degradation in the quality of life and the ability for our constituents to move around. In addition to that, in, in my neighborhoods, we have no sidewalks. It's an older, older neighborhoods, it is big houses, but older neighborhoods and no sidewalks, so people are on the streets. The biggest issues we have is traffic and, um, uh, safety concerns. You know, just down the street, down the road from this location, at, um, Lancaster Avenue and Conestoga, there was a, a man was killed, um, in twenty-seventeen crossing the street. And safety is a major issue. And also, we have a major problem with, um, trucks smashing into the bridge at King of Pressure Road. So we have mass, we have major problems with traffic. And my concern is, is that this will exacerbate an already significant traffic burden that we have in, um, the northern section of, of Radnor. So I'm very keen on the trips, what they are relative to existing operations and how they'll impact that. And then, in addition to that, we have neighbors who are very close to this operation and people who know, again, Wawa is a great company and it does great business. That is probably detrimental to those, those neighbors who live there, right? They, they can expect to see a greater impact on their properties than they currently are dealing with. So those are my concerns and that's, that's what I, I wanted to have a chance to bring out tonight.
All right, and before, uh, before I send it, um, over to our staff, um, there was one thing in here with the build-out year and the design year that looked backwards to me.
Gary, do, do we know that?
Twenty-twenty versus twenty-twenty-five can-
Oh, no, has, twenty-twenty-five? I can't imagine twenty-twenty-five. Oh, design year.
Yeah, it's on, it's on page four of the June thirteenth, um, uh, submission from traffic planning and design. Top of page four, twenty-twenty opening build-out year, twenty-twenty-five design year. I'm not an engineer.
Um, the twenty, um, twenty-twenty-five year is five years after the opening. That's a requirement from PennDOT that you look at, um, something in the future to make sure it's designed properly.
Okay.
And it can accommodate the traffic five years from the opening date.
Okay, all right, understood. Thank you. Um, all right. And then, and twenty-twenty opening, that would be your target, um, if, okay, all right. Well, with that, Kevin, can I turn it over to you and, and-
Absolutely, thank you.
If you can give us, uh, you know, your feedback and thoughts on this, please.
Yeah, I, some of the concerns that I had, uh, were raised earlier. The, the lighting, the height of the canopy, uh, size comparison, the Banbury one versus this. They seem to be about comparable in size in terms of the store. Have you guys looked at the lighting aspect of this? The dark sky compliant lighting for the canopy particularly, um, building mounted lighting, parking lot lighting, uh, to make sure that, uh, things are shielded away from the residents?
Right.
From that standpoint?
Dark, I don't know how far we've gotten, I don't, um, but I made a note, dark sky compliant. I know that's been a concern previously, uh, at other projects. And, um, you know, and I know lighting's obviously a concern with the neighbors, so we'll try to address that the best we can.
Obviously, this will have to go through the design review board in terms of signage, landscaping, buffering, and the appearance of the building, but these are things to, to think about in the immediate, as you are heading into that, um, aspect. One of the issues that we ran into over at Banbury with the remodeling of that store was the signage and how bright ultimately the new signage was compared to the old signage. Wawa was very receptive and working with us and putting a dimmer on those, um, and dimming those down. Um, once we realized that they were a lot brighter than what the previous signs were, just dealing with the internal types of lights, um, they went to an LED package, um, and those tended to be a little bit brighter, but they were very receptive in installing a dimmer to cut down the brightness of those. So, I just keep those things in mind as we're heading in that direction towards designing these things. In terms of the buffering along the rear, um, obviously more evergreens would be better uh, in terms of season, seasonal interest and buffering. Would you be opposed to applying to the zoning hearing board for, um, whether it's a fence or a wall that would exceed the maximum height requirement now of six feet?
Yeah, I, I kind of felt that's what people are getting at. But I'll ask, do you guys, is that the thought, the immediate neighbors behind, to have a tire fence? Okay, yeah.
All right.
You know, I think if that slips down to, to build a retaining wall up to serve as a planting bed and then, you know, have the fence on top of that, yeah.
We'll talk to the neighbors right behind and before we finalize a landscape plan. And hopefully it'll be satisfied, you know, that we, that we can get their input on it too.
And the only other thing I, I noticed is about six tenths of a mile between, uh, this location and the one down at Banbury. Just looked at it.
Six, six, six tenths of a mile, you're saying, between these two locations?
Correct.
Six tenths. It's five thousand two hundred and eighty times point six, what's that?
Yes.
Three thousand and change. I'm not going all into it. Mr. Norsini, please.
All right, thank you, Commissioner. So, uh, Mr. Canelia, I know you, your traffic folks from TPD aren't in, but if, uh, the letter from Fran Haney from PennDOT noted some changes. Western side access, uh, reduced in with right learn, right turn lane on Aberdeen. Okay, so that, that'll, and then we also know we have, there's currently parking on Aberdeen that St. Catherine's uses a lot, right, right there.
Yeah.
Okay, so whatever's done, all this needs to be taken into consideration with what goes on.
Yeah, I think that's beyond the site though, isn't it? There's parking spaces.
No, it's, it's, it's in-
It goes up to the Sunoco station?
It's in front of the Sunoco.
Oh, does it? Okay.
And then they, the heat further goes on about the left, uh, left turn-in at the eastern side access. And, and again, just bringing these out, you know, these are questions we're gonna ask and we'll have Damon ask, um, on the traffic side. Very big concern for us. Also, this is one of the, one of the signals, this is a called, this is a critical corridor in PennDOT parlance. So the township is actually looking at, uh, doing traffic adaptive in some of these areas. So we would, we would talk to you, uh, about that. All the great stuff Kevin said I agree with, whatever you can do in the back to buffer, that's a good thing. And then on, on stormwater management, so we all understand that, you know, we have a site that's basically totally impervous, impervious. And if you meet our ordinance, which we hope you would, uh, it's gonna be a benefit. But we know that this area, you know, Midland, we, we just, the Board of Commissioners just awarded a project last night to address some of the serious issues we have there. So while you're early on in your design, I'd ask Mr. Evans to look at a couple of things. So if possible, exceed the ordinance if you can, uh, and perhaps the use of green infrastructure, which may come into play on that buffer. So that, in, in my world, you know, your traffic and your stormwater are two big things. This intersection is congested on, on, we all, we all know this, we all, we're all through there. So I understand PennDOT's comment on the right-hand turn lane, but we do have to look at what's going on there with St. Catherine's being there. And as Commissioner Browski noted about sidewalks, there are, there are now. And of course, Wawa's gonna have to upgrade to current ADA standards and all for this project. But we'd like you to take a look at that seriously as we go through. And of course, this will all come out when, if you do submit a final, you know, if you do a land development application.
Steve, one question. Is the ground going to perk in this location? Is it gonna have, is, will there be sufficient ability to convey through percolation?
That's what the, the applicants, when they submit, they're gonna give us a phone book of a stormwater management study that's gonna show-
Generally, it's not gonna perk, right? And then they're gonna cut, and then they're gonna ask for a waiver.
That, that would all remain to be seen. So I, we'd have to see what happens for groundwater recharge versus storage versus, you know, but that, that's all addressed in their submission. If, if they do submit-
So your view, you would be looking if it doesn't perk, then you would have storage on site, so underground storage? In addition to seventy-five thousand gallons of underground storage of gasoline?
So I'm not the applicant's engineer, I'm your engineer and these folks' engineer. So it's gonna be up to them to go through this and determine if they can meet our requirements. And if they can't, that's a waiver request to this, to the Board of Commissioners, which obviously staff and our consultants would weigh in on to help you.
Sure, thanks, Steve.
Yeah, sorry, two more things that, um, as I'm looking at the plan, kind of jumped in, um, actually three things. I typically in the new Wawa's, the super Wawa's with the gas pumps, we see air compressing, uh, air compressor stations for filling of tires. I don't, is that something that would be incorporated on this site and if so, where?
So currently, we're, they're proposing two air pumping stations, um, which on most of the Wawa's is, is currently the standard. Um, they're both down at the corner. Um, one is ADA accessible and then one's also near the, the Aberdeen entrance.
Is that locked in stone or can that be located more towards the intersection of Aberdeen and Lancaster for just noise?
You're looking over, over in these corners over here, or?
Furthest away from the residents.
Yeah, up, up in this corner?
Sure.
We, we can look into it. Um, it's something we'll have to run by Wawa as well. It's definitely something we can look into.
Uh, second, your loading area?
Mm-hmm.
Which would be?
Right here, in the front off Lancaster Avenue.
And is that your trash, uh, in the bottom right corner for refuge?
Correct.
Your hours of, um, deliveries and trash removal, something to consider, given that particularly the trash is right adjacent to the residential neighbors. I was being mindful of, of that.
Just another question for staff or the applicant, or the potential applicant. What is the underground, um, structure that's shown in light along the bottom of this? Up, 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 right, not down, 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 keep going, that, no, up, up, up. What's that thing? What is that?
This line right here?
Yep. No, 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 the, the one that's going, that one that goes across.
Yeah, it's got, it's got little ovals in it.
Oh, these right here?
Next one up.
Up, up, that, yeah, what is that?
That's what he's talking about.
Proposed sanitary line.
Is it existing or?
Currently, there is a sanitary line that, that courses the entire property, taking sewer from other neighboring properties and running it the whole way to Aberdeen. This plan would propose to reroute and put a new sewer line in, which would incorporate all the existing as well as the new Wawa sewer line and connect back into a similar location in Aberdeen.
All right. All right, Roger, um, and, and any concerns, any, anything from your review here?
Since it isn't an actual application yet, I haven't really reviewed it other than some discussions with Steve.
Fair enough.
And I agree with the points he made.
Okay, thanks. Damon?
Um, Mr. Norsini took most of my questions, but, um, regarding the western access on Lancaster Avenue, I know that's been asked to be looked at a couple of times. One, from PennDOT, looking at a possible right-in, right-out access or even eliminating that access. Is that something that could be, that could be done?
I'm sure with, uh, with TPD and PennDOT, they'll have to coordinate those through the application process.
Okay. Uh, my other question would be, has there been any discussion for a possible connection to your adjacent neighbor Verizon? Uh, add a shared access?
Currently, the plan doesn't propose. I know with grading, there's a little bit of a grade change in the existing proposed. Um, again, that'd be between the current owners, whether, and they would be willing to put in access or whether Verizon would want an access, and then we'd have to look at it from grading considerations.
And a traffic impact study has not been completed yet. Only thing's been completed so far is the scoping application, so, um, I guess that, that would be all my questions for now then.
Damon, just, just for, for the public, um, what's the difference between those two? The traffic impact study versus the scoping app?
The scoping app, application is to set up, to tell the, um, applicant what they're supposed to study, what intersections they're supposed to study, what type of analysis they need to complete. Um, that is for the traffic impact, that's what they would do for the traffic impact study. The traffic impact study will have all their analysis, all their counts, all their recommendations and what improvements will be, um, what improvements they suggest or-
Okay. All right, thanks, Damon.
Could I have just a couple? So it's three thousand one hundred and sixty-eight feet is what six tenths would be. So three thou, a little more than three thousand one hundred feet. Steve and Damon, Kevin and Luke, you talk about this, this, um, intersection right here. And right now, there is no left-hand turn lane when you go, when you're heading west. So people who are making, heading west, making a left-hand turn onto Aberdeen, it's only one lane to get around them. Is there any thought at this point in your minds about the necessity of a left-hand turn lane on this, in either direction?
Well, I know PennDOT did mention, uh, left turn-in, I mean, they, they spoke about left turn-ins possibly congesting traffic because that's a through lane right now, but I mean, people do take lefts on Aberdeen. And, and as Damon said, I actually liked his idea very much about possible shared access. You know, it takes out one more curb cut. So that's all gonna come out in the traffic impact study. And the staff and the consultants also look at that and provide further information on maybe additional intersections that have to be studied. So it, it, this will be studied thoroughly. We'll make sure all the intersections that could be impacted are taken in. My big concern, like I say, I, I noted before, so when there is parking there, when there's mass or a funeral, it gets a little tight in there now. So if there is a right-hand turn, we still have to make sure we can accommodate that parking and perhaps improve the two-way traffic when cars are parked there.
Right, and you talked about traffic adaptive, but to me, this is, seems to be very ripe for a, a new lane, a bypass lane, and then two lanes around the left-hand turn lane. And the left-hand turn lane would come for, far enough to pick up this, uh, whatever the westernmost entrance is.
I think we'd have to wait to see the, the results of the study. I mean, that's, that's always a possibility, Commissioner. I, I would suggest we wait to see the results. Same thing like on the infiltration testing and take it from there.
Well, I'm just kind of anticipating, you know, the, the areas of tension.
Yeah, that, that will be looked at- Yeah, that, that will be looked at in the traffic impact study, and we also have to look at the feasibility of actually adding that lane to see what type of impact that would have on the adjacent properties, one across the street and even on this side.
Yeah, and it would, it would encroach, obviously. It would be, that, that would, that would be an encroachment, yep.
And Peter, any legal issues you see here? We're very early in this, we're not into waivers or anything like that, but anything that, that.
The only question I would have for Nick is whether or not he anticipates any variances necessary to, for this use.
No, the only thing would be possibly to build a higher fence.
And how about any anticipated SALDO waivers?
I don't know that yet, you know, I really don't.
Is your, is your client a Wawa-preferred developer?
No, I guess not. I have no idea what that means, but.
Thank you.
I guess I have one more legal question. On, on the ownership of the properties, it, it shows the Carkelians, is that, is that Carkelians?
Yeah, Carkelians.
Carkelians for the Sunoco site, but the BP site is Wayne Property Acquisition, Inc. Who, I assume that's a, a corporation, and who are the owners of that corporation?
Gary.
Sole, sole owner?
Yes, sir.
And will you combine these properties?
Yes.
Would there be a conveyance of one of the properties till it's a common ownership?
We haven't gotten that far yet. It would be a common ownership, yes.
So would need, that would need to happen, wouldn't it, for, if you're going to eliminate the?
Normally, what happens is after the township approves a lot merger, then it would, one of the conditions would be common ownership, of course.
So would there be a conveyance for that?
Yes, I assume there would be. Now, I don't know if it'd be tax exempt or not, Rich, so I don't know.
Well, why would it be exempt?
Because it depends on what, if you're going to a corporation, to individuals who own the corporation, there may be.
So it's a change in form of ownership, you would argue?
Yeah, and I, I'm not.
You're talking about the transfer tax?
Yeah, the transfer, the transfer tax.
We're not talking about real estate, because you got to look, this is going to, obviously, once it gets built, if it gets built.
Yeah, the real estate will change, and I was, I was talking about transfer taxes as well as.
I, I assume that's what you were talking about, transfer taxes.
Do you have any numbers on gross receipts anticipated here? Gross receipts? No?
How about the, how about the one at Banbury? Do you have any idea what, what the gross receipts are on that manually?
Township probably knows it, because.
Yeah, we can find that out.
No, we can't actually find that out, they won't, that's tax information, we won't, we can't get that. If, maybe Luke can get it, or Lisa, but, you know, they don't give it to the commissioners, only special commissioners, maybe. So it, it's a, that would be private tax information that every time I've asked for tax information from a, from a taxpayer, they refuse to give that.
Well, let's, let's see if we can, if we can get some information voluntarily, maybe, on that, just to give us an idea. That'd be appreciated.
Yep.
Okay. All right, with that, thank you, Nick. Anything else, Nick?
No, we don't have anything.
All right, thank you very much, we appreciate the presentation. With that, I'll invite public comment. I would just ask, state your name and your street, if you wish, and we'll hear what you have to say.
Susan Stern, 202 Midland Avenue. I wanted to thank Lisa Borowski for suggesting to Luke Clark that he hold this meeting, and thank you, Luke, for scheduling it. And I thank the applicants and Rich for coming out to, to give the public an opportunity to give some input before anyone gets too attached to the plan. So I had an opportunity to read through the packet. I'm going to just scroll through a couple of, I have some comments about the scope for the traffic impact study, I'd want to get back to that in a minute. The thing that I really wanted to touch on first has to do with zoning. I read Mr. Canelia's letter, I read Mr. Kachansky's response, you know, the, the, the position that this is a by right application is really an unfortunate position, because if you read the zoning code, and I happen to know the zoning code pretty well from eight years on planning, when you look at 280-101 non-conforming uses, any change in a non-residential occupancy shall be deemed a change of use for the purposes of 280-101A. Now, what that means is that there is an existing non-conformity on the properties. The gas station is otherwise known as an unenclosed retail use. So in the commercial district, retail uses are allowed, but a gas station is an unenclosed retail use, and that is a non-conformity. And the, Mr. Canelia wrote that he's proposing converting two lots that have this existing non-conformity to one lot with a smaller non-conformity, and so this is not a big deal, and this is all by right, except, except, okay, okay, so that.
But she's misstating my.
Hold on, Nick, hold on.
I may be misstating his letter, but.
Let her talk.
The supposition that this is by right, all I wanted to say is that under 280-101, this particular application should probably be going through the zoning hearing board as a special exception, that when you want to change a non-conforming use to another non-conforming use, and a change in a non-residential occupancy is considered to be a change of use, this process should go through the zoning hearing board as a special exception. Mr. Kachansky's letter and also makes mention that there's not any, if you further read 280-101, which talks about that you can't extend or enlarge a non-conforming use without an especial exception by the zoning hearing board, from what I heard tonight, and I don't have everything, and there's not a formal plan, but I would ask that our zoning officer look carefully at the following considerations. The extension of the hours of operation of the non-conforming unenclosed retail use called a gas station, an expansion of the hours of operation to 24 hours would be an expansion of the non-conforming use, that should have to go to a special exception for the zoning hearing board. A change in the height of the canopy for the non-conforming unenclosed retail use called the gas station there, if the height of the canopy is going to be taller than the existing canopy, that's an extension of the non-conforming use, and we should have to be, this project should best go to the zoning hearing board. It's also the best protection for the neighborhood. The zoning hearing board has, has more purview to hear the concerns of the residents with regard to its impact on life, health, well-being. There's some other things in the zoning code, I'm just going to take a look real quick. I believe 280-107, no, 280-105F says that no parking, loading, or service area shall be located within the front yard setback, except as permitted in PIP, APB, and PLO, that's not commercial, and except, or unless as authorized by special exception by the zoning hearing board in the commercial use district. So because they're proposing the, the loading dock in the front of the building, we should really have this project go to the zoning hearing board for a special exception. In addition, under 280-107 prohibited uses B, where requested by the township, an applicant for a proposed use shall demonstrate as a condition of approval that adequate provisions will be made to reduce and minimize any objectionable elements to the degree necessary to ensure that the proposed new use will not be noxious, hazardous, or offensive as defined above and it's defined above. A 50% increase in the amount of gasoline that's going to be stored underground, as I heard them mention tonight, and perhaps the numbers aren't completely accurate, is an increase in that noxious use. And again, this all speaks to that this project should be going through the zoning hearing board, not through the planning commission and the Board of Commissioners as a simple land development. So those are the, those are the technical things that maybe many neighbors don't know about, but I happen to know about, and I understand Mr. Canelia is, as always, a very staunch advocate for his clients, and I respect his, his laureally acumen greatly, but I would respectfully ask that the township look long and hard at whether or not this, this project should be going through the zoning hearing board as a special exception. I did have the same question you had about the development schedule and staging, so thank you for asking that. With regard to the scope of the traffic impact study, I would like to point out that on page three, number eight, calls this land use context a suburban center, I would agree with that. In number nine, they're calling the study area type urban. We are not urban, Radnor Township is not urban. This is our business development part of town, but we are a suburban community, and any considerations of this should not be considered urban. In addition, under number 10, I would respectfully request that the peak hours, the PM peak hours be extended to 3:00, because anyone who lives in this town knows darn well that the traffic on Lancaster Avenue starts to pick up from 3:00 on, it doesn't wait until 4:00. I do have questions as to whether or not the staff agrees with number 11B on the annual based traffic growth. I don't think that a, a presumption that 0% growth is probably accurate, and I had some questions about their tables, specifically on page one of one, where there, it, there seems to be an aberration that the traffic volume went down in October of 2011. I can't even begin to imagine why that would be the case, and I was curious as to why they only took the truck volume from one year, that they are complaining to do a gas station here and are intending to have it be 24 hours a day. My neighbors and I should have no belief other than they intend to have this operation running 24 hours a day. The other gas stations and the other Wawa's in Radnor do not join, do not abut residential properties, and this property should not be running 24 hours a day next to a residential property. Thank you.
Thank you, Susan.
Commissioner, do you want me to kind of address some of those zoning issues?
I would, I mean, that's, that all sounded really correct, and I really appreciate Susan saying this, I really wish that she was on my side with this Penn application we had recently, because she, I'm sure she would have been able to find all those same things and more. But, but Susan basically says this is, that you got to go to zoning hearing board, so why, why, why is your letter not say that?
Well, because I disagree, and I'll, I guess I'll go in reverse order, as I have wrote them down. The gas and an increase in the obnoxious use, I didn't hear, and I think it was yet to be determined, the amount of underground gasoline storage that is currently occurring. We heard that there's about 75,000 gallons proposed, but I don't know that we heard a number, at least I didn't hear a number, in terms of what's existing. So I don't know that there's any increase in there, or whether or not that would be considered a noxious use or not. Obviously gasoline is a dangerous substance if it's exposed to the environment, but there's all sorts of regulatory precautions for those things that I don't necessarily think that the code provision would apply to. Something to be mindful of, but I don't know that that necessarily applies. The loading in the front yard, the specific zoning section says front yard setback, something that we looked at very early on, there's a 15-foot, 15-foot front yard requirement in the C2 district. If you look at the plan, the area of loading area is located outside of that 15 feet. 15 feet actually is comprised of all buffer area in the area where the street trees are at. So the loading does comply, even though it's in front of the building, it's outside the front yard setback. So that is not a zoning issue. Regarding the non-conforming use, the use of gasoline in of itself is a retail use, retail use is a conforming use. The provision in the codes that require uses to be enclosed within a building is not under the use regulations, it's under special regulations. It is non-conforming, but is not a non-conforming use. Therefore, that the provisions of the non-conforming use and the change of occupancy would not trigger this to go to the zoning hearing board for a special exception. Those were things that, the last two were things that we talked about.
Can you explain that again? It's non-conforming, but it's not a non-conforming use, so.
There's a non-conforming aspect to it, but the use itself is retail use. When you look under the use regulations and how this is permitted, it is a retail use that has other regulations to it. Some of those regulations, there are existing non-conformities to that, but the use in of itself, retail sales of gasoline, is not changing and is a conforming use in the C2 district.
Okay, thanks, Kevin. All right. Anyone else? Jane?
Jane Gally, 7th Ward. I have just some thoughts as, as this was going on, they were, and Mr. Canelia mentioned dark sky compliant, et cetera. Well, there's no such real, really, there's no such thing, because not only will the lights underneath spill and bounce out, because that's what lights do, and that's the way it works, so I would be mindful of the canopy and how well it's lit, and how much spillage and bouncing will go to the neighbors along that lower end. That would be my first, because I've been through lights, down on my end of the world. The other question I have is, I know, and I'm sure Mr. Narsini will be on top of this, but I would, since there are, there are residents nearby, and this is, the, the older tanks will be probably removed, that extra precautions will be made so that it, there is no spillage into the ground, no contamination of the air, of, you know, all that stuff.
It's actually regulated by the State Department of Environmental Protection, and there's very rigid restrictions, and that, that is heavily regulated.
Okay, that's, I just want to make sure, because there are people there, it's not like you're in the middle of nowhere, so, thank you.
Anybody else? Come on up, don't be shy.
I'm going to miss the BP, that's where I get my gas. I've got some.
Can you state your name for us, please, and your street?
I'm Jeff Green, I live up on Harbison Road up here. I've got concern about that corner and the whole Aberdeen, Midland, Lancaster Pike area. The church and the school give me pause, and I'd like to second Mrs. Stern's comments about the, the scoping and the traffic study, except I'd like to suggest that instead of the peak hour being extended to include 3:00, there should be an analysis of the school itself, the hours that the school comes in and dismisses as a separate thing, because that's when the kids are there. You don't want this averaged into the morning peak or into the afternoon peak, when the computers, commuters are on the road, because they're really separate things. We ought to add the intersection of Aberdeen and Midland to the traffic study, I didn't hear that, and the reason is, that's where the kids cross, it's a school crossing, and we put a crossing guard there, and the same thing at Lancaster, which is being studied. But what the crossing guard does affects the traffic, and that ought to be taken into account. The driveways on the other side of Route 30, the shopping center, where, you know, Pete's Place and.
Chipotle and Anthony's.
Chipotle, all those guys are, they don't line up on the other side, and I think that ought to be taken into account, and the ins and the outs are kind of, everybody violates whatever they're supposed to be, and it affects traffic on Lancaster Avenue, that, that ought to be considered. One thing that was, was mentioned, and that's the amount of trips this thing adds. Wawa kind of is a pretty busy place, and I'm not sure using the standard Institute of Transportation Engineers rates as is proposed in the scoping document is correct, and I think the township ought to take a look at what some of the similarly sized Wawa's generate, and how many of those trips are new, and how many are passed by. Just about everybody that goes to the gas stations now are on their way somewhere, and yes, it's predominant with Wawa, but on the other hand, there's a lot of people in town that just, you know, go and get a sandwich and then go back home or something. So we ought to have a, oops, I'm sorry, maybe some kind of analysis of that.
I'll address that real quick, if you don't mind. The IT has come out and has studied places like Wawa recently, and has come up with new rates for that type of use. So the use that they are using in their scoping application does seem appropriate and should be used for the Wawa.
Okay.
My point, and I made a point, we, because we have another Wawa 3,000 feet away, I think it would be helpful to get the actual data from the Wawa rather than IT as another, we should at least have that data point, and I would ask that we get that.
Okay.
I used to do these studies for a living, and the manual tells us that local trip generates, generation rates are always better than the average rates in the trip generation manual, and that's why I'm making that comment. And lastly, I love to walk Route 30, and I'm always, you know, having trouble crossing the streets and everything, so I'm glad that the scope includes improvements to the sidewalk, and it'd be nice if we get some planning along there, so I don't have the sun beating down on me all the time. Thank you all very much.
Thank you, Jeff. Anybody else? Mr. Bonnberger?
Thank you, sir. Hi, Charlie Bonnberger, 218 South Aberdeen. This is actually perhaps some questions and a continuation of some of the conversation that was held here, and I'm really glad that we've got such great professionals, both as residents and people working here, because this is the kind of stuff we should be talking about. One of the things in the scope application that, that jumped out at me were two sentences that specifically stated, as noted above, the proposed Wawa will replace two existing convenience market slash gas station uses. Therefore, a large portion of the trip generation shown above already exists in the study area. I can only imagine that the attempt is to try to compare the, the existing properties to a current type facility like a Wawa. To say that those two facilities are convenience stores is almost ludicrous, I mean, you've got a BP with a, a cash. I mean, you've got a BP with a cashier stand that might sell gum and cigarettes and something else, I'm not sure, and I have been in that Wawa in the Sunoco a thousand times, they don't sell anything.
I've never bought anything from either one, and I live right around the corner.
Exactly. These are not facilities that are currently inspected by the township's health department for food service and so on. So there are two things that our professional staff mentioned that it'd be great to get some clarification around. One, Mr., sorry, Kevin, I can never pronounce your last name, Bonnberger's a tough one, too, about the use issue. Currently, you talk about the fuel service, absolutely right, but now you're talking about food service added in. I don't know if that triggers anything. And then the second part, Mr. Drummond just talked about the current study statistics. Does the fact that, does that, does this attempt here to make that comparison of calling these current convenience stores, does that impact how that's measured?
It's not going to impact how it's measured there, but we have requested they actually do existing counts at the existing accesses to determine what their traffic volume is there. So we will have that information, and then we'll have what they are projecting as their future traffic.
I can address the food establishment aspect of this. We would license the facility as a licensed food establishment, but food establishments can come in basically two category uses. A restaurant, which is someplace that you would sit down and eat, versus retail, which would be carryout. So a pizza shop, sub shop, that you're purchasing food and carrying for consumption offsite would be considered retail. A restaurant where you sit down would be considered a restaurant. So there are two different categories, both inspected by the health officers in the township.
Yeah, and on the traffic end, I mean, just to give my two cents on that, I'm down at St. David's Road and Lancaster Avenue, and, you know, my wife crosses the street every day to go to the train. That's a Speedway, 300, 400 block of Lancaster Avenue. That is a, cars fly down that road. So that is a concern to me, you know, that's in terms of the traffic numbers, shooting more cars down that corridor there is a little concerning to me. Hi, Annie.
Hello, folks. I'm Annie Webb. I'm on Ivan Avenue. And so first, thanks, Luke, for having this meeting. I think this is, you know, what community governance is all about. It's great that we have this chance to talk. I want to say, if this does go through, I'm really going to miss your friend and employee, Howard, who has been taking care of our cars for 20 years, and I think that's kind of a real loss for our ward, because he does our inspections and minor car repairs, and it's really just a great convenience to have that there. I do agree with Rich, which doesn't always happen, Mr. Booker, but that traffic is one of the biggest issues that all of us in the neighborhoods nearby are concerned about. And so I wonder, I don't think right now on 476 that there's a sign that says there's a Wawa off of Exit 13, and I would suggest that there would not be one if this one were to happen, to maybe help to not encourage trucks to come right off of the highway. I think another issue that makes this use different than the two gas stations that are there right now, obviously, is the 24-hour aspect of it. So while having the gas stations and a place to get a bite to eat doesn't seem that bad, you know, from 9:00 to 5:00, or as our kids are going to and from school, my concern is for the impact, you know, at 12:00 o'clock at night, when somebody's getting gas and shining lights in the neighbor's yard, or just hanging out, you know, loitering around there in those overnight hours, that doesn't happen now, even though the gas pumps are open 24 hours. You go in, you get your gas, you leave. The other concern is the parking on Aberdeen, like what was brought up with the church uses there. And I would say, as a neighbor who drives down Aberdeen often, when that small two-lane road is often blocked by that parking, I wouldn't be really sad if that parking went away. But I think it's a common use for the St. Catherine's folks, and I'm wondering if you guys could help mitigate that by, on Aberdeen, moving your location in a little bit and making those five parking spaces real parking spaces that are off of the road. Does that make sense? So just something to consider that...
You mean like cut into the curb?
Like cut into the curb, so that they're not blocking the road, which they are right now when people park. You have to, really, only one car can go by.
Or be lax with, you know, shared parking.
Right.
However, that could be accomplished.
Exactly. And then finally, I do think that, you know, there needs to be traffic, really good traffic studies about that intersection where your house is, Luke, and then the one this St. Catherine's, two Sunoco's Rite Aid is. And I would suggest that we do want to keep the traffic moving, but I wouldn't really want to have the left turn, an additional left turn lane off of Lancaster onto Aberdeen, because I think that would just increase the traffic going into the neighborhood, you know, to have that easy turn into the Wawa and then, you know, or go further into the neighborhoods. I mean, I'd kind of rather just have traffic keep moving along. But thanks a lot for having this meeting.
Thanks, Annie.
So I guess that's another thing to consider, is making that no left turn onto Aberdeen, right? I guess that, that's another alternative.
No left turn.
All right, well, so, so I agree with that. So I think that that left turn, if we're going to have it, that this is going to be a major blocker for traffic on Lancaster Avenue.
Hi, Dana Ott. I live on Midland Avenue, and I would like to echo all the concerns that were voiced here today as a resident. But most especially, I'm very concerned about the before-school hours with the traffic study. I don't really know how that's conducted, but you cannot underestimate the traffic before school, when you have kids walking on bikes, going to St. Catherine's, going to the middle school, crossing Lancaster. I mean, it's already concerning, and these are kids we're talking about. And I can tell you, as a person that goes to Wawa every single day to get my coffee, instead of making it in my own house, Wawa is packed in the morning with people like myself, with contractors. I mean, I visit Wawa anytime between 6:00 AM and 8:00 AM in the morning, and it is constantly packed. So those hours, I think, are very concerning, because the bottom line is, we're talking about the kids in the neighborhood. And then the second thing I'd like to ask is, I think this is very helpful to have this meeting, but the majority of our community is not here right now. I mean, it's, you walk around, no one's here in July or August. So what is the timeline going forward? Are we going to have an opportunity to have more meetings like this before decisions are made, and more informational sessions, when people are actually back to living in Wayne?
Yeah, Dana, that's, and that's, you know, Trey did talk to me about that, said, hey, everybody's away, and I know that. We've got to work with the timing that we have. So this came in, I wanted to have something, this is being broadcast, it's being taped. And my thought is that they are going to have to go to planning, at least as we sit here right now. If for some reason they end up at zoning, you know, the public will have an opportunity to weigh in both of those times, and then it will come to us for caucuses and preliminary and finals. So, and I would plan on having another one of these meetings, once we get some more specifics, we get through the studies, things of that nature, so that we can have a more focused meeting, which I anticipate would be, you know, sometime in the fall, winter, spring, sometime.
Okay.
Just to answer your question.
And thank you for holding it. I do appreciate it.
Thank Lisa, too.
Thank you, Lisa.
I live on Midland Avenue. And I have just two comments now, because I like to save most of these when we can actually see more plans, but the two things I see here is, I look at Lancaster Avenue, and I don't care what you do with it, I don't, where are you going to put a third lane for left turns? You've got three left turns, you've got a left turn into Aberdeen, you've got the school traffic, you've got everything else. I don't know how any traffic study is going to actually resolve these issues without inconveniencing somebody by saying, you can't turn left on Aberdeen, you can't, you know, you can't only have one cut out, you can't only have two. There's 25,000 cars that go in each direction already. This is only going to increase in five years. So I don't know where you're going to put these cars, and it's not like you can expand this, because you have an existing sort of a bottleneck right there. And so, so this is probably, conceptually, the wrong deal for the wrong site. I appreciate what you want to do with this, but I think that you're going to get a lot of pushback from the neighbors when this all happens. And then finally, the other part of this is, I just want to give you an example of corporate behavior. Look, Wawa's a great company, but they're corporate, okay? I would ask all of you to drive down to the 8,300 block of West Chester Pike in Upper Darby. There's a super Wawa there, not, probably very similar to this, probably 4,500 square feet, maybe eight pumps, 55 parking spaces. You should see what it did to the neighborhood, to the point where they had to make one of the streets next to it a one-way out only. And to your question about the Wawa, you know, 3,000 feet down, there was a Wawa 3,000 feet down closer to Upper Darby. Wawa closed it. They can do whatever they want. I don't care if you have a lease for seven years. They can buy you out, and they're going to close it, and then all that traffic's going to come down here. So I don't think they can give you any assurance, Mr. Booker. I think that they'll do what they're going to do. I think it's inevitable that you have a super Wawa. That other one is not going to be that profitable, they'll ride it to the end, and then in five years, your five-year plan will be, you'll have twice as many cars there. So I would really, really ask the development committee, and really, and the neighbors, to really push back on this. And I'm going to be here at the forefront to hold you accountable, because I, this is not a tank yank and putting in a nice urgent care center in a site that you couldn't do anything else with. And I know about these, okay? This is actually now taking a neighborhood and disrupting it to the point where it's going to become unlivable. And I really think that you have to, in good conscience, go back and address this, and think about what you really want to do with this, because we're going to fight you on it.
Thanks, Dr. Beers. Is there any further public comment? Come on up.
Charmaine McManus, and I'm at 301 Midland, right behind the Sunoco Station.
Good evening.
Hi. Very nervous. I think what's concerning is, we're a walking community. We're a community that walks. At least, my family does. We have five kids. I have three of them that work across the street. I'm concerned about them crossing Lancaster now because of the traffic. They text me. Okay, I got to work safely. You know, they're afraid to cross the street because there's so much traffic, and the traffic goes fast, and people run the red light. I can't even imagine a Wawa and the amount of traffic, the parking. We had a funeral today at St. Catherine's. My daughter went to Leep, 16-years-old, just got her license last week. She came in the house and she said, Mom, there's a car parked a third of the way across our driveway. How am I supposed to get out? I'm concerned about people coming down Pembroke, coming down Midland, parking up Aberdeen, continuing to park on Midland. I mean, to me, I feel like it is just very concerning for our kids. We have so many kids in our neighborhood. My girls work at Five Below. They extra staff on Friday afternoons at 3:00 because of the number of kids that they come in. I just don't want a kid hurt trying to cross Lancaster, Aberdeen, to get to those places. It just, and I am concerned. I mean, my house would back up to 75,000 gallons of gasoline. And I do, I love the Sunoco Station, they've serviced my cars, you know, I've been there since 1974. I've been there. I just, I can't imagine. And we do have our problems backing up to the service station. Mr. Finley, you, we, you back up to...
Charmaine, can you just make sure you're talking on the mic?
You know, it just, you know, we do have our problems, but they have worked with us. Yes, we get trash under the fence, but again, they close at 11:00. 11:00, I know, the lights are going off, the noise is going to shut down. 4:00, they deliver gas. I know that because my bedroom backs up to that. I know. Every morning at 4:00, the gas, it's filled. The trash comes. But I just, again, I just cannot imagine having a huge Wawa open 24 hours a day. I'm just, I guess, fortunate that my kids are older now, my youngest is 16, so I guess I don't have to worry about the people kind of hanging around. I don't. That's it, just concerned. And the traffic study, are they going to look at traffic on Sunday?
Well, yeah, that's, that's...
Sunday's not listed on here.
I saw that as well.
And traffic on Sunday is...
Well, church.
...equally as bad as every other day. Thank you.
Thanks, Charmaine. All right. Any other public comment?
Hey, Dan Finley. I'm at, right behind the Wawa there, 301 Midland Avenue. Thanks for holding this hearing, and I appreciate the dialogue with the community as well. One of the things when you're doing the traffic study, if that could be actually focused on the neighborhood as well. They tried to do that with the middle school. Where's the entrance going to be? How's the flow through the neighborhood going to be? If you could consider getting rid of the entrance on Aberdeen, maybe that pushes the traffic out of the neighborhood. And Wawa is much more of a destination than a gas station, so people are going to use the back roads to get to it, cutting through the neighborhood. So if there's a way to not just count volume, but also look at what the flow of the traffic's going to be, I think that would tell us a lot more about how it's going to impact the livability of the community right there. Thank you.
Thanks, Dan.
Hi, Baron Gemmer. I'm not an immediate neighbor, but I listened to Susan's setback questions, and I had one of my own. I see on the drawing, we have the front yard setback indicated there and there, and over here we have the side yard of 20 indicated here. In the back, they indicate the 15-foot required buffer area, which is referenced from C1 up in 28049. What they don't show is the rear yard. And rear yards for C2 is a minimum of 35 feet or 35% of the lot depth, whichever is greater. This is about 242, which would make the rear yard about 85 feet. I'm not seeing that indicated on the plans or... Which side is the rear? This would be the rear. They've indicated this is the side, these are obviously two front, this is the rear. And so that, you talk about those air compressors, they, I mean, actually would encroach into here once you get up to the 85 feet of that. And the buildings are being destroyed, so whatever, they're not extending nonconforming existing buildings. These are brand-new buildings, which would need to conform with the rear yard.
Thanks, Baron. That's a good point.
Wait, so the rear yard is by the houses?
Yeah.
We comply, shows it on the plan.
Hold on, Nick, Nick, hold on, me for you. Is there any other public comment? All right. Seeing none? Nick, you look like you had something you wanted to say.
I was going to say, we comply with your setback. It does measure it as the 30 or 35%, and we comply with it, as shown on the plan.
All right. We'll make sure to pay special attention to that. All right. Well, if there's no further public comment, then at this point, or Lisa?
I just had one thing, and I want to thank Ms. Webb and Ms. McManus brought that up. So the loitering issue is something that I was concerned about as well. You know, it's definitely a different use over there. Is there, I don't know if there's a way to maybe coordinate with our police department or understand that, you know, we've already got a Wawa there. You know, are there any issues there now? I don't know. I don't live over there. But are there any issues around the loitering and things like that that could perhaps move down the road? I know that we do, you know, we have laws that prevent that kind of stuff, but, you know, is that a concern, and is that an issue? And we don't have to address it now, but...
And I wouldn't speak for the police department, nor do I know whether there are any issues with the current Wawa, and to the extent that they're aware of those, or any of the other retail areas in this vicinity. Just remind everybody, this is very early on in the process. They may or may not be submitting a sketch plan prior to the full land development plans to get formal feedback from the planning commission. Any formal submissions by the applicant will necessitate public notification, so all the adjoining property owners within a certain distance will be receiving notification of the upcoming meetings for this. You know, we'll have the opportunity to sit down with the applicant in the coming months to refine this as more details are available and then are put down on paper. This is just, it's more of a glorified sketch at this point with more details to follow.
And as you move forward with those plans, and you start to, you know, understand when the different meetings will be and the notifications, maybe we can build in another, you know, to Luke's point, build in another one or two of these where there's more opportunity for the community to just kind of, you know, air the, I mean, this is a nice, I think, informal way of providing the neighbors some more information of sharing their concerns, so. And then my one other question is, there were a lot of things brought up with regards to traffic tonight. Is that, are those, some of those things reasonable to be incorporated into the plan? And how, if that's the case, how does that happen? How do those get addressed? Or is that plan set in stone?
No, it's not set in stone, so we're going to review...
No, it's not set in stone. So we're gonna review, you know, Gilmore, Damon and Amy have already reviewed the traffic impact scoping application. We're gonna take a further look. So usually what will happen on a project of this type, Gilmore's gonna work with staff, with the applicant, as they're trying to compile their traffic impact study, and this is where we're gonna add requirements that they need to do. And I took copious notes, and I know Damon did, too, I'm sure. So we'll make sure that we can incorporate a lot of what we heard tonight. I think there was a lot of great things talking about, not just the school, but church, and all these, you know, different time uses that occur right across the street.
Rich?
All right, I have, I have one more. And I appreciate all the thoroughness on the traffic study, because we, my experience has been, traffic studies are set in stone. Once they do them, they won't be changed, and unless there is the motivation on the part of this board to support the public, that they'll push it through. One question that I had that was texted to me was about alcohol sales at this Wawa. I, my understanding is that alcohol sales are not prohibited, I mean, are prohibited at a convenience store, but maybe there'd be a restaurant here, and they could sell alcohol. Is there any thought on that? Or can you make a commitment that there would not be alcohol sold at this location, this Wawa location, or can you not?
Obviously, we'd have to talk to Wawa, Rich. I mean, we haven't even, that hasn't even crossed our mind at this point.
You know, are they, they do have, they do have some licenses, though, right?
They have one, I think, in Wawa, actually. I think they have one-
Yeah, Glen Mills or something, somewhere out there.
I think they have one, don't they?
Yeah, Ford, that's it, yeah.
Again, I don't think with the size.
Go ahead.
With the current Liquor Control Board regulations, they would need a much larger size, a separate entrance and a separate register. And this is not, like we talked about, a large format store. So I don't obviously see that as being feasible here.
Okay.
Okay. Bring it up with him, yeah.
Also, unrelated, we have a lot of work going on on the wall at Radner Chester Road, thanks to Steve Norsini for this historic wall that has been rebuilt very, very copiously and carefully. So thank you for that.
All right. All right. So, all right, well, thank you to Mr. Canilia and our possibly soon-to-be, maybe applicant. Thank you to the staff. Thank you, Rich and Lisa, and certainly thank you to the neighbors for all their valuable input. At this point, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn, and we can-
Still moved.
All right. Is there a second?
I guess I'll second it.
Perfect. All right. Have a good night, everybody. Thank you for coming out.